Good evening, I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Eau Claire School Board Meeting to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you all for being here this evening, those of you who are with us and also those of you who are watching us on the live stream, tonight's meeting will be broadcast on Valley Media Works, chardal channel 994, also on the radio WRFP 101.9 FM and online at valleymediaworks.org and ECASD.us. Are we in compliance with open meetings law notification?
Yes, we are.
Okay, could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Beekah?
Here.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Harder?
Here.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Here.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Here.
Commissioner Torres?
Here.
This takes us next to our public forum section of the meeting, we'll have up to four minutes to address the board, provided that your comments do not involve personal complaints regarding school personnel or any person connected with the school system. So, do we have anyone signed up for our public forum?
Yes, we do, Heidi Wentland.
Heidi Wentland, 4204 Heritage Drive, Eau Claire, Wisconsin, 54703. I'm here tonight speaking as a teacher and a parent in the district. Twenty-six years ago, I was hired by the Eau Claire School District and given my first teaching job at Putnam Heights Elementary School. My parents were very proud and I was extremely excited, and my dad was really quick to explain to me how much more I was making than what was listed on my contract. He wanted me to understand the importance and value of having really good health insurance, and also of having good retirement. And I have to tell you, now that I've had kids and had to take them to the ER and I'm closer to retirement, I have an even deeper appreciation for both of those benefits. Eighteen years ago, I met my husband, who was also an elementary teacher in the district, and back then, we had many date nights at Putnam and Roosevelt. It was always the discussion which school we were going to work at for the evening. And right from the start of our relationship, we understood how dedicated we both were to our jobs, and we understood the workload of being an elementary teacher. Well, now that we're married and we have two children, we still have those date nights, but they're at the kitchen table after our kids have gone to bed. As parents, we feel very fortunate that Eau Claire values having quality teachers. We appreciate how the district invests in their teachers, providing various trainings and in services, and over the past years, I've heard how many other districts seek to hire Eau Claire teachers because they're quality educators with lots of training. We're proud to work in schools that have hard-working teachers and dedicated staff, and we feel blessed to see this in the schools that our own children attend in Eau Claire. Unfortunately, the board has some very difficult decisions ahead of you in regards to the budget and OPEB. It is our hope that you as board members make decisions considering these two factors. First, that you continue to value retaining quality teachers in our district, and secondly, that you closely consider the commitments and promises that have been made during the past years to its teachers, as we've gone through many years of salary freezes in exchange for retirement benefits. I want to thank you for the hard work that you do, for all of us as teachers and for the children that we serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others signed up for public forum?
No, there is not.
No, okay. We will move on then to the Superintendent's Report, Dr. Hardbeck.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I would like to first go over the upcoming events for the school board. September 11th, there are two meetings. One is for the Budget Development Committee, which will take place at 1:00 PM, and the other is for the LEAP Committee, and it will take place at 4:00 PM, and both meetings are held here in the Administration Building. On September 24th, we have a meeting of the Policy and Governance Committee at 8:45 AM, and that will be followed later that evening by our regular school board meeting, and both of those meetings will be held in the Administration Building. I'd like to congratulate several members of our staff for their work on the annual Border Battle. Yesterday, we had over 100 golfers come out to Wild Ridge and show their support for the ECASD homeless program. They joined us for lunch, golf, and dinner. Many sponsors contributed and donated items for the event, and we want to recognize those sponsors, Northwestern Mutual for their financial and volunteer support of the event, and our other major sponsors, Diane and Ray Hughes, Larson Companies, Groot Help Cooperative of Eau Claire, Student Transit, Miracle Ear, Privaya, Merchant's Bank, Sharp Photo, Fast Signs, Markert and Higgins Travel Leaders. We want to say a special thank you to our two lead volunteers, Scott Lau and Brent Goska, for helping Dani Klaskus organize the event, and I want to thank Dr. Kane Young and Jim Schmidt for their support of Dani Klaskus in her role as our homeless coordinator. It was a great event, everyone was in high spirits, the day was beautiful, it was a perfect day for golf, and I think everyone there was keeping in mind the fact that last year, we ended the year with 311 students who had been identified as experiencing homelessness within the last school year. So, 100% of the proceeds from yesterday's event will go to pay for items and services needed by these students to continue their education uninterrupted while they are in their homeless situation. And one thing I always like to remind people about is that for 90% of these students, homelessness is a one-time event within their lives and within the lives of their families. And in talking with Dani Klaskus, we find that it takes anywhere from two to 18 months for these families to get back on their feet. So, we have to keep in mind that what a stressful time it is, how traumatic it can be, but the support that comes from our community and the support that comes to these children individually makes a difference in whether they stay in school and stay connected to school. So, we're very, very grateful for this event. We have some very good news to report tonight. Each year, for the past 35 years, the U.S. Department of Education has honored a select number of schools nationally. The recognition is based on the school's overall academic performance and their progress in closing the achievement gap. In a typical year, Wisconsin might have eight schools selected to join approximately 335 other schools across the country as National Blue Ribbon Schools. This year, one of our schools in the Eau Claire Area School District has earned the distinction of being named a National Blue Ribbon School, and that school is Flynn Elementary School. We have a delegation tonight, they're sitting there on the front row, and I'm going to ask them to stand up, and somewhere in the audience, I saw their principal, Adam Keaton, please stand up. I'm going to ask that you remain standing, because Flynn staff, as you know, the U.S. Department of Education seeks out and celebrates great American schools, schools demonstrating that all students can achieve to high levels. More than 8,500 schools across the country have been presented with this coveted award since its inception in 1982, and we have two other ECASD schools who have also achieved this distinction, Memorial High School in 1983 and Locust Lane in 2011. We are pleased that the efforts of the Flynn staff and the achievement of their students is being recognized this year. We believe wholeheartedly that Flynn is representative of all of our elementary schools, in that as a school district, we are all working to create safe and welcoming schools where each and every student can achieve to their highest potential and master challenging content. Flynn will be honored at an awards ceremony in Washington DC in November, and will shortly be celebrating their honor with their school community. So, I want to thank you, Principal Adam Keaton, for your leadership, and I want to thank you to the Flynn staff and the families who continuously support the education of Flynn students. Yours is a job well done, thank you. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hardbeck, very exciting. I just have a couple updates to share with the board. First of all, we have our Region Four meeting for the School Boards Association, that'll be Thursday, September 27th. So, if you haven't yet looked at those details, the pre-meeting starts at 4:30, and then the dinner's at 6:30. So, I think that if the whole school board shows up, we get some sort of an award or like a pie or something to take home, so hopefully we can all make it, and you can talk to Patty about registering. There's also coming up on November 8th, but they want people to register early, the WASB Legislative Advocacy Workshop for our region. Agenda starts at 6 o'clock with a program until 9:00, and again, that's at the CISA in Chippewa Falls on Thursday, November 8th. So, if you'd like to come for that, you can also talk to Patty, and I'll send those two dates out. I'm also excited to share that Dr. Hardbeck will be presenting at the 2019 State Education Conference. We just heard back, so we're going to be presenting a program called "Policymaking as a Tool to Meet Your Strategic Plan," so very excited about that, and did you have something to add?
Yeah, well, I have to say, I have a co-presenter, if that's the president of the school board, Joe Luganbill.
It'll be a great time, so. And finally, I just wanted to welcome our new student reps. I know you've met them before, we've introduced them, but this is officially their first meeting. So, we have Gwen Haywood from Memorial High School, and we have Abby Green from North High School. And then I can segue right into the part of the school board meeting, that's usually the student representative report, so if either of you would like to say a few words, please feel free, just hit the button and read is good.
Well, school started at Memorial, we are getting ready for Club Rush in about a week and a half, so our clubs are meeting, deciding what they're going to be doing for Club Rush, as well as the homecoming parade, and yeah, that's it.
Yeah, just at North as well, we have the Club Dash next week, where kids are just going to start showing their clubs and getting more involved, and kids are finally starting to get settled in, so.
Well, we look forward to your reports throughout the year, so, and let us know if we can work with you on any issues that you're interested in. Next up, that brings us to our School Board Committee reports. Is there an update from the Budget Committee? No, okay. LEAP? Okay. Policy?
We have a new policy. We have a new policy on student mental health services in front of us tonight.
Thank you. Did you have anything legislative you'd like to share?
No.
No, all right. That will bring us right to our Consent Resolution Agenda then, and I can't see on the screen there, so I'll click on this one.
And President Luganbill, I am experiencing some issues with Board Docs.
Yeah, mine is not opening right now.
Several people are.
Okay, I was wondering, because my computer too, it's not.
Yes, so we will improvise. The strange thing is, Dr. Hardbeck and I were just talking the other day when we were having issues with Board Docs, and I said, "What would we ever do if it went down during a board meeting?" So, we're going to find out!
You're about to find out, folks. It's going to be a bumpy ride, honestly. We'll be fine. We're going to go vintage tonight. All right, so our Consent Resolution Agenda, I'll read these, and if you'd like to pull an item, please just say so. So, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of August 20th, 2018, the minutes of closed session, August 20th, 2018, the Human Resources and Employment Report, adoption of new policy 441.3, student assisted voter registration, provisions to policy 723.2, employees as mandatory reporters of threats of school violence, formation of the Ad Hoc Revenue Committee, change name of Parent Advisory Council to Family Advisory Council, and the addition to the Head Start Grant. So, I would approve a motion to adopt 7.2 through 7.9.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, and none of this is monetary, so we will do a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right. Those items are passed, and that brings us to our one individually considered resolution, which is the Resolutions to Send to the WASB Policy and Resolutions Committee. I know they were in Board Docs, and now that we're down, do any board members need a copy of those resolutions? Because we could run and make copies quick if you like them. Otherwise, I can just read each of them, and if you have questions, just let me know. Do I have a paper copy? All right. Perfect. So, four of these are amendments to existing WASB state resolutions, and the rest are creations of new resolution language. So, how this works is, we have the opportunity to submit all of these to the WASB Policy and Resolutions Committee, and then they could be up for a vote before every school district delegate in the state come January. So, I'll just read each of these. One is to amend Resolution 2.20 to Read Under Student Poverty. The WASB supports using student poverty as a factor in the state equalization aid formula, and then adding and revenue limits. I should say that the primary reason behind having resolutions is we have a lobbyist at the State School Board Association level and a legislative staff, and what is written in the resolutions is what they're able to advocate for at the Capitol. So, this next piece is amending Resolution 2.31 to Read Under Funding for Children with Disabilities. The WASB supports increasing the special education categorical aid reimbursement level to not less than 90% of prior year eligible costs, and maintaining funding at not less than this percentage each year thereafter. So, it's changing that 33% number to 90%. The state currently pays at least 90% of the costs incurred by private schools for services for students with disabilities enrolled in the Special Needs Voucher Program, with no ability to review or challenge the submitted expenses. The next one reads amend Resolution 2.70 to Read Under Private School Aid, Providing Taxpayer Financed Vouchers to Private Voucher Schools Through Aid Deductions from Public School Districts, Harms the Majority of Wisconsin Students by Diminishing Resources Available for Public Schools or Requiring School Boards to Raise Local Property Taxes to Compensate for the Lost Aid, Creating Two Publicly Supported Education Systems Threatens the Sustainability of Public Schools. And the final amendment is an amendment to Resolution 6.02, Under Tobacco and E-Cigarette Free Schools. So, it adds e-cigarettes, and it says, "The WASB supports school learning environments free of tobacco products and e-cigarettes." Any questions so far on those? Okay. And I should add, Commissioner Hamburg Boyle helped with these, and also Dan Ross Miller helped from the School Boards Association. So, a lot of these are ones that the School Board Association has wanted to see changed, so we're their guinea pigs on these. The next reads regarding reading interventions. The WASB supports legislation to provide state funding for ongoing assessment, intensive interventions, and remediation for students who have reached third grade but do not read at grade level. A resolution to Read Community Schools. The WASB supports state funding for inclusive community schools programming that utilizes strategic community partnerships to provide support services such as health and nutrition, as well as enhanced learning opportunities to meet the diverse needs of students and families. Creation of a resolution to Read School Safety Teams. The WASB supports stronger relationships and communication between school districts and law enforcement agencies to improve school safety. The WASB encourages member school districts to convene multidisciplinary school safety teams to aid in threat assessment, prevention, protection, mitigation, response, and recovery. And the creation of a resolution to Read Trauma-Informed Care. The WASB supports the use of trauma-informed care in schools, including recognizing how adverse childhood experiences can have an impact on a child's development and can increase needs for counseling or support. And finally, a resolution to Read Gifted and Talented Programming. The WASB supports substantially increasing state funding for gifted and talented programming in Wisconsin's public schools. Are there any questions or comments regarding any of these proposed resolutions? Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
I just wanted to comment, Joe, you're still on the State Resolutions Committee for WASB, so that's nice that we have a board member that sits on there. And you will be going through these resolutions prior to January when we meet at the convention, of which we have a delegate, I think Commissioner Torres is our delegate on that floor.
Right.
So, he will be there to represent us and to vote on these resolutions. So, thank you, Commissioner Torres.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Beekah?
I have a question, thank you for this work. For the resolution of gifted and talented programming, when you were discussing this wording, did you consider specifying an increase as you did for the resolution of children with disabilities?
Well, I asked Dan Ross Miller about that, and the reason why he felt it should just be this, is they currently don't have an ability as an association to advocate for any increase in any funding, and currently, I don't remember the number off the top of my head, but it's a categorical aid that is allocated statewide for school districts of less than $500,000 total. So, it's an abysmal amount that the state is currently funding gifted and talented programming for. So, I think they just want to have the ability, period, to start advocating for increased funding with gifted and talented. So, that was where they were at with that, but. Are there any other questions? Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Commissioner Beekah, that's not to say that when the Resolutions Committee looks at it, or other districts have that conversation, that it won't be amended, or it could be amended on the floor when it comes up at the convention.
Right. That's a good point. Okay, well, not seeing any other comments or questions, I would entertain a motion to approve then the proposed Eau Claire School Board Resolutions to Send to the WASB Policy and Resolutions Committee.
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, and we will do a voice vote on this one as well. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right. That moves us on to adjourn to committee now. We have our first committee report is the Summer School 2018 Update.
All right, Patty, thank you for fixing Board Docs. I was going to hold up flashcards otherwise, so we don't have to do that, so that's great. So, I'm Dave Oldenburg, the Director of Academic Services, and one of the charges that I'm honored to do during the school year is manage much of the day-to-day operations of the summer school program with the direction of the Executive Director of Teaching and Learning. So, today, I'd like, or tonight, I'd like to give you an update on the recently concluded summer term, and then answer any questions the board may have. So, the programs that we put in place in the Eau Claire Area School District are guided by the strategic plan that the board has set forward, and I'm happy to report, at least in my estimation, your summer school program touches on all the areas of the strategic plan. We certainly advance academic achievement, both in allowing students to perhaps remediate areas of learning that they did not maybe master during the school year, to advance or grow academically in an area of interest, and also to seek out different and unique partnerships that we can create with the community that provides a different flavor to the summer school programming that we don't always put forward during the school years. There's some real unique opportunities during the summer that you can find in the academic achievement area of the strategic plans. Certainly, we advance student social and emotional growth, we're able to give students a safe and caring environment during the summer school weeks, where sometimes some families need some assistance to provide a safe and caring place for their student to be. We spend great amount of time building a collaborative culture with our community partnerships, but as well as with our staff, that maybe have a real personal interest or a project-based learning opportunity to employ during the summer, that maybe is something that is more difficult to put in place during the school year. So, we partner with our staff to find a specific area of interest that staff member may have, or an area of interest that students have, but that staff member wants to facilitate. We certainly spend a lot of time developing staff for summer school by supporting either professional development, acquiring resources, or providing the space for different activities to occur. For example, all the students that fly drones at North Star, you drive over there this summer, and it looks like there's a blackout going on, you can't see the sun half the time during June because all the drones flying around. And then, as we talked about, partnerships with families and communities. We seek out interest from families, what do you need that we can provide more and more indifferent programming for your student during the summer, and then how can we help your student gain access to the summer, to summer program? And one thing that we'll talk about a little bit later here is expansion of busing, for example, and that comes from the feedback that we received from our parents. So, district course enrollment, we're very proud of this. You can see the growth that we've had from 2016 to 2018 in the amount of students enrolled in various summer activities. You see elementary, middle, and high from bottom up. So, in 2016, we're very proud to have 5,800 different enrollments of students. We were able to grow that by almost a third, just over a third, to 8,723 students enrolled in a district course, and you can see significant, you see growth in each of the areas, and you really see some significant growth at the high schools that maybe at one time might have been underrepresented, and now we have more indifferent high school students engaged in summer programming. If we take a second, think about that, getting high school students to actively participate in programming at their high school in June and July, August, seems like a bit of a lift, as Gwen and Abby would probably attest. So, we're proud to get our high school students engaged as well. Here's an example of many of the community partnerships that we have, and some of the enrollments that we can reflect in 2016 and 2018. So, you can see a list, which we could, you know, we could spend the next 45 minutes iterating the list, but I'll let you take a look at them and see some of the variety, I think is what stands out, and then the opportunity for us to grow unique partnerships. So, some of them very large, like the Park and Recs program. We have over 3,800 students that engage in Park and Rec enrollment this past summer, and you have some real unique areas to provide some more indifferent programming. For example, we're real proud of the partnership we're able to create with the Eau Claire Area Mutual Assistance Organization, where we had 16 students participate in Mongol Language and Culture Course this summer. So, and then you can see some different opportunities we may add, a new partnership this year, also found in Girl Scouts. As you can see, we have some areas where we have significant amount of student enrollment, and we have some areas where there's a really unique interest for a student that we're able to explore. So, we're very proud of this piece. And then you can see at the bottom, 5,888 students in 2016, and then that number up to 7,000 in partnership enrollments. We have evening and overnight programming to highlight here, and just some, we'll click through here, some of the things that you can see here. Our Boys and Girls Partnership, programming with Park and Recs, Beaver Creek Reserve, Boy Scouts, Boys and Girl Scouts again, and what is unique with these programs is we take a look at them, is we're able to provide all-day and evening programming, and we know that all-day programming is real significant for parents that work during the summer, and simply, the transportation would be a barrier for their student to be able to access this programming. So, when you can deliver your student to the program in the morning, and then we're able to provide the student care throughout the day, rigorous programming, we're able to feed the student, and keep them there until someone can... feed the student and, and keep them there until someone can come and pick them up later in the evening, be that mom and dad, or somebody from the family, that is significant, and that has really helped our student enrollment grow, when a student is able to spend the day at a program, and there's not need for transportation midday. And then the evening program, and overnight program. For, for many students, this is a unique opportunity to spend some time away from mom and dad in a safe and caring environment, probably to ease mom and dad's concern as much if not more for the student, but they give them an opportunity to be immersed in a program. And summer is a great opportunity to do programming like this. Number of staff hired, so this, here's a significant area I want to highlight as well. You see that we grew our employment of staff, and by staff, we mean people that are employed by the Eau Claire Area School District during the summer. So it can be the staff that worked during the school year, for example, some of our outstanding instructors at Flynn, or it could be someone that only comes aboard to join ECASD during the summer, someone that maybe spends most of their time at Park and Rec, but works in partnership with the district, district over the summer programming. So you see a growth from 294 to 493 employments by the district during the summer. So, and that stands to reason as we've grown our summer platform. We are to the point now where we're hoping that maybe some of you, board members perhaps, might work for us over the summer, because it's beginning to be a challenge to be able to hire all the adults that we need to run all the programming. So if you've got an aptitude, or an interest, or something you'd like to do, give Jim or I a call and see what we can do to bring you onboard. Also unique this year is we spent time and energy and the talent of the folks that work in our department to put together a robust academic and career planning guide, for example, for the summer, called this the Summer School Planning Guide, so it looks very much like what middle and high school students would get during the school year. And we made sure that we mailed one of these out to each family in the Eau Claire Area School District, right? So every person that we could identify in the district that has a student that would be eligible, age-eligible to attend, we sent one of these out. And then we also placed several of these in critical areas around the community. We placed some at the Soul Turner House, placed some at the Boys and Girls Club, at the YMCA, and different areas where we thought we could target pockets of students that we could still grow our enrollment with. And mailing all these out to each family, that was really well-received. So many of our families, we know, will access this type of programming in a more virtual manner, but the, but that mailing these out and getting these out to all the families we could identify was really an equity and access issue, and we were able to expand our enrollment through this vehicle, through this tool as well. Programming enhancements for 2018, so just a few things I want to highlight that were new, that we're able to add for 2018, because the board was willing to allow us to do so, we were able to have all elementary schools run kindergarten classes. So the board was able to support the expansion of that FTE, and again, that creased, increased access area schools, right? It's awfully significant, we felt, we think, and I think the data showed us, to offer programming at each of the elementary schools for, for our early learners, all the way through our fifth-grade students, and we were able to realize that this, this previous summer. Free breakfast and lunch program at all schools, so all of your ECASD schools providing summer programming, provided breakfast and lunch for all students. And that is students that may be enrolled in our program, or a student that may just choose to come for breakfast and lunch. We were able to feed all students, and that, that feels good. It's also, I would argue, the right thing to do for the resources that we're able to pass along, and that was a fantastic thing to be able to do. Weekly scheduling at the middle school to increase diversity of offerings, what we mean by this is we took middle schools, and we allowed middle schools, worked with their staff, actually, the staff kind of prompted us to do this, it was a great idea, to build week, week-based program, as well as programs that may be chunked in two-week or three-week programs. So it may be that I'm gonna fly drones for one week, and then the next week we'll have maybe an athletic camp, and then the next week, something that wraps around the library, some programming in the IMC. So we are able to provide more indifferent, or diversity of program, and instructors like that, too. And instructors would maybe be willing to come in and work for you for four days over the summer, and have that fit into their summer commitments with their family, where sometimes eight or 12 days is a little bit more challenging. So we're able to increase more indifferent adults engaged as well to provide that unique programming to students. So that was a great addition, or variance to provide to our, to our offerings. This is a very significant area, and we'll talk a bit about the new busing routes that we're able to add. So for example, you had students at DeLong Middle School that wanted to engage in whatever summer programming DeLong had, but then access strength and conditioning a little bit later in the day at North or Memorial. Well, the challenge is, how does the student get from DeLong to North or Memorial? Now, one could argue, they could run, and that could be part of the strength and conditioning program. However, probably not something we could replicate day by day, nor convince the student to do so. So we're able to provide busing to the high schools in this example, and we saw a growth of students, as you would imagine, participating in additional programming, so the DeLong programming, or the South programming. And then, that student take the bus and then follow programming to either North or Memorial. And while we can't measure this, I'll float the idea that that is also the beginning of that safe transition or pathway for that middle school student to that high school, right? They've got their feet on the ground already at the high school, and while they may be a seventh or an eighth grade, or going into seventh or eighth grade, it begins to make that building a little bit less daunting. And then transportation to the Boys and Girls Club from the high school. So we've been working with our Boys and Girls Club to expand opportunities for students to access their programming, and here's a significant thing to be able to do, to target that student, that ninth or tenth grade student, that once programming is done during the day, during the morning at the high school, what's next for that student? Well, Boys and Girls Club is a safe and caring place to be. Getting there can be a challenge. We were able to offer busing because of the, of the board's commitment to the program. We were able, we had the funding to offer busing to Boys and Girls Club. And, and used, too. We had students using the transportation, certainly. And then the High School Credit Recovery Program. So we changed the model of high school credit recovery a bit this year to move towards a more interactive or virtual program. So we hire ECASD staff in all the core areas, plus health and PE, I mean, all those areas are core. So we have a teacher, or teachers, depending on the need for student enrollment, at the building to support students as they engage with ECASD curriculum that is provided through a tool that we call Odysseyware. So the teacher is there to coach the student, and the student is engaging in, and curricula that looks more similar than maybe some iterations of summer, summer school did in the past, to the curriculum that they had during the school year. So it's a logical continuation of an area where maybe the student needed a second dose, an opportunity to, to retake or get another bite at the apple, so to speak. What was, what was really transformational, more so than I anticipated with Odysseyware, is the student would take the work home, right, and access that work via a digital tool, an online tool, at home. So the student finishes the work, they go home, and then they re-engage with the work, something that was challenging to get the student to do maybe during the school year. And the students would engage at all sorts of times. You could see timestamps, Thursday night at 11:30, you know, July 15th, or whatever it is, Sunday morning, right? Students engaging at all these different times, really showing that maybe differentiating the opportunities for students based on when they chose to have access was really transformational. And we were able to almost double the amount of credits that students were able to obtain this summer in 2018 from 2017. So we know that virtual education is fantastic, but you still have to have the caring adult involved. And I really give a lot of credit to our assistant principals at both high schools, and the adults that they were able to, to employ, to engage in the program, to support the students. Again, that bends the curve for students that may need remediation outside of ECASD, or seek credit outside of ECASD. We're very excited about that offering, and looking to grow that to be more present during the traditional school year as well. Most importantly, what do our parents tell us? Well, our parents tell us, on this survey, five through one, five being highest, our parents tell us that eighty, if I read that right, 88% of our parents tell us in this survey that our, they would rate the quality of our summer school program of being a four or a five. If you include three through five, well, then we're able to get to 98%. And, and that's, that's, well, that's one survey piece of data, that's fairly affirming of the work that we did this summer. So I really give a lot of credit to the staff, really appreciate the board allocating additional resources to be able to do this. And, what is it, September 10th? In about two weeks, we start meeting with our summer partners and start talking about summer 2019, so the wheel rolls on. So with that, questions from the, from the board?
I don't see any lights, but I will just say, I want to thank you all, the Teaching and Learning Department especially, for their work on this, because I think of it as like a win-win-win-win, everything that this has led to. I visited the Credit Recovery Program over the summer, just to hang out and see how it was going, and it was amazing to hear from the students who were checking in or popping in briefly, or just hear from their instructor about how they were able to catch up so much more efficiently and effectively, as opposed to maybe in the past, traditionally, summer school, you can catch up one or two credits. Now they can, they can be on, on track to being in line with the rest of their grade by the time they come back, so that's an amazing piece. But then also just considering the, what a lot of these pieces bring in terms of increased revenue to the district, and the community partnerships, building those. And I know we had two, two new ones last year, and I know we'll probably have two or three or four more next year, and it's just continuing to add on to that massive list of, of agencies and organizations that we're helping acquaint kids with and families with in the community, so it's great. Thank you very much.
I appreciate the support. President Luga-Bell, and I should have mentioned this before, but funding is an, an important piece to add to this conversation, so where do the dollars come from? Well, while I'm not the funding expert, and, and Ms. Johnson can add to this, what I can tell you is that as you grow the enrollment in your summer school program, that adds to the amount of students, that increases the amount of overall revenue the board can levy for. I think it's a, you know, kind of big rock, maybe inarticulate way to put it, but the program does increase the district's funding. So there's a funding source for this to occur. Then there is also an agreement, and Mr. Schmidt does this more than I do, but work out and agreed upon costs, we have cost certainty when you partner with your partners, right? So we make sure that there's a, the best use of the public dollar to increase as many seats as practical in these different partnerships. And we do that in partner with the partnership, with the partners, and the partners will tell us what's possible for them to do, given the dollars that we allocate. It's a, it's a real symbiotic and real healthy relationship, so we're real proud of that.
That's great. Thank you. All right, seeing no more questions or comments?
Well, our summer school staff will take any more adoration that you want, so.
Oh.
If you want to continue to adorate them, absolutely.
I'll do one.
Do the student reps have anything they'd like to say? Or, oh, do we, oh, sorry, Commissioner Hambuch-
I'll do some adoration. I think this is a great program, and I'm excited to hear about it. And I'm really excited to hear about that some of the ideas are seeping into the, to the main school year, the credit recovery stuff, and it's, it's great to see that, that kind of experimentation taking place, and that you found a place to, to do some of that work, another place to do some of that work. Also, the increased engagement is great. I mean, these numbers are pretty amazing. We're seeing, was it 8,700 out of around 11,000 students engaging? That's a really good-
That's the amount of student enrollment, so a student may choose to take two courses, so it isn't a one-to-one ratio, but what it is, is a 33% increase in students that are enrolling in a summer school class. Roughly about 45% of our students take a summer school-
Okay.
-class, and we're, and of course, we're targeting that number to grow that.
And a single enrollment being what period of time?
Perhaps, for an example, like, maybe a student, high school senior athlete comes in and says, "Look, I'm just gonna take the strength and conditioning." That counts as one student being enrolled for the summer. May have a student says, "Well, I'm going to do the strength and conditioning, but over here I also want to take the jump in AP, the AP prep class." Well, then that would count as two. So a third grader at Sherman, they come to your, your Sherman third grade program, then that counts as an enrollment.
Yeah. Well, in any case, it's really great just to see the increased, you know, increasing the access to this by sending out the mailers is fantastic, and just to see that it's working, you know, that we're getting more students involved in this, I think it's a really good thing. I'm, I mean, I've advocated before for shorter summer, summer breaks. I think there's a lot of research that I've, that I've read-
Absolutely.
...that says there's, you know, summer learning loss is a real thing, and just to see things like this, I'm sure is helping with, with that effect as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Our, our building administrators, especially at the elementary level, where they work so closely with, with students, really work hard with families to encourage all students to enroll, but especially students that might need a little bit of a boost in the area of math or literacy, to give them that tool, that skill, as they move into the next year. We know the confidence that builds in a student when they come in with, with confidence, knowing that they've got a tool, or the skill, or the needed application for the next grade level.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner Hambuch.
Did the, oh, Commissioner Hambuch-Boyle?
I just wanted to mention the fact that you've expanded the piece that serves our community with families that experience food insecurity, and the fact that that has been expanded this year as well. The Alice Report just came out and verifies that anything we can do for our community and our families relative to that is a good thing. So that's another great piece of this whole programming in the summer, so thank you.
And the Food and Nutrition Program works real hard to staff, to find the appropriate staff to be able to do this during the summer, and that gets to be a bit of a challenge. We have lots of adults who want to engage and, and help. Just being able to get the adult in front of the student and help deliver that program, you know, takes some, takes some commitment by that department, too. So it's really, really, you've got an example, I think, of the departments within ECASD really working in addition to be able to have this programming, so.
Well, thank you. Did the student representatives have anything to add, or community?
Yeah. Well, I can speak for both of us, having engaged in youth leadership. I've actually been part of the summer programming since, I think, before my freshman year, so I've been in, from stuff from liberal arts to this past summer, having the opportunity to take an online class through CVTC. And I can attest to these statistics. I've always had really enjoyable and pleasant experiences with the summer programming here, and I really appreciate it.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just like to add that I think it's really great that expanding it is allowing the children with food insecurity to have this, because I think that's a really great need that's being met by our district. And also, being able to hear the students who talk about, oh, wanting to catch up with that curriculum, and now being able to, more so, is a really great thing, I think.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Oh, yes, Commissioner Beke?
Maybe on a wish list for next year, the district is doing a very good job of disintegrating data by gender, race, class, and perhaps for next year, to just to ensure that we know that that equity piece is indeed there, thinking about that ahead to the next year.
Yeah, excellent, right. I will make sure we add that to reporting.
I can actually speak to that a little bit. We've, in the past, the partnerships have not been in, we've not done the enrollments in Skyward. We're shifting next year to put that enrollment in Skyward, so we can do exactly that.
Awesome. That's great. Anything else on this agenda item? Okay, then we will move on to our final agenda item for the night. Thank you very much, Mr. Oldenburg. If we could turn on the dot cam, because I think board docs is still-
Board docs is working here.
It's back? Oh, wow. We wasted paper to print out these, okay. Well, our fine, oh, our final agenda item tonight is the new policy, 453.7, Student Mental Health and Wellness Education. And just to provide, just very brief background on this, there are no policies at the state level through the School Boards Association that are sample policies regarding student mental health services. So if we're able to have a first reading of this and subsequently adopt it, this will become the sample policy for the state. And it, you know, of course, as you all know, over the past several years, districts have moved more towards providing these services, or facilitating the ability for students to receive these services, so having a framework in place and policy, we felt would be a good next step. So if no one is opposed, I think we can just read this. I can just go ahead and read it, and if you have anything you'd like to ask or add, just interrupt me, because otherwise I won't see your light. So, "The Eau Claire Area School District recognizes that offering mental health counseling services provides significant benefits to the social and emotional well-being of students. The district shall utilize a framework that includes universal exposure to practices that promote high levels of wellness, to include Tier One, universal practices, relationship building, resiliency, and rich social and emotional learning, trauma-sensitive practices, conflict resolution, and mental health and wellness education. Tier Two, targeted services, early identification, screening, and progress monitoring, effective individual and group interventions." individual and group interventions, co-planning strategies with students, families, and community providers. Tier Three, intensive services, individualized plans and strategies for students, including school-based mental health services, and a coordinated system of care. School-based mental health. The district shall work with licensed clinical behavioral health providers to facilitate school-based mental health, SBMH, services for students within the hours of the school day and on school grounds. Such onsite accommodations serve students who might not seek these services in clinical settings or would not have means of transportation to a clinical setting. The purpose of the SBMH program is to, one, improve accessibility, provide opportunity for timely access to services and treatment; two, reduce and prevent suicide and/or violence against others among school-age children by early identification and intervention; three, engage students and family members in mental health services offered by licensed clinical staff; four, promote coordinated treatment and services by interfacing with school-student service professionals to improve student success when there is a written consent to permit exchange of client information as authorized by FERPA; five, improve school performance and minimize student absences. Public or private behavioral health clinics or providers can, through a signed memorandum of understanding, MOU, with the district and licensure from the state of Wisconsin, locate a clinic within a school building, known as a school branch office, and provide direct mental health services to students utilizing a clinic-employed mental health provider. SBMH services shall be billed through Medicaid, private insurance, self-pay, or other external sources. The remaining continuum of mental health services for students, particularly at universal and selected levels, may be supported as part of the district's service delivery model. The district shall promote equal access to school-based community mental health services and strategies to allow for collaboration and coordination of services by other government agencies, the community provider, school personnel, and families. Care shall be coordinated between the school branch office and school personnel whenever possible. Information from the school branch office therapist, including assessments, treatment plans, school evaluations, and educational plans, may be shared to inform and support each other with the informed consent of the parent slash guardian. Nondiscrimination protections. The district shall exclusively enter into agreements with health clinics and/or providers that agree to abide by the district's nondiscrimination policy for students, policy 411. The district shall prohibit the practice of conversion therapy as defined by the American Psychiatric Association by school branch office therapists. Review of policy. The superintendent and director of student services shall be responsible for the development of administrative rules to correspond with this policy." So are there any questions? Board members have comments or suggested revisions? Commissioner Hambuch Boyle.
I don't really have any suggestions or revisions. I just want to thank P&amp;G for pulling this up right after we received the report on the mental health services, which is very well done. I wanted to, we got them in reports and took them home and read them, a top date, but I wanted to thank the staff for the reports that we received relative to all of this. They were very well done, so that's all I wanted to say.
And yeah, you're right, that did spark a lot of this, and I want to also thank Dr. Hardbeck, Jim Schmidt, and Kaiyang Jong for helping us with the draft as well. And I do think it will be, it will be nice to have yet another policy we pass that will become a sample for others in the state. That's an exciting opportunity for us. So are there any other comments or questions board members have? Oh, Commissioner Hambuch Boyle.
And I just make the comment, with Kaiyang pulling those pieces forward, then the PBIS pieces and all those pieces that are part of our report were brought into this policy, so thank you.
Right. Well, if there's no other comments, then are folks agreeable to moving this on for passage at the next meeting? Okay. That brings us to our final agenda item for the night, which is, oh, I should add, this is a committee report, so are there members of the audience who'd like to speak to this? Yes, if you want to just go up to the microphone and name and address.
Bobby Green, 1508 Eddie Lane in Eau Claire. I just had a question, I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. So this thing is about opening the school to the possibility of having a satellite branch from a private mental health service provider come in and basically open an office there. It wouldn't be school board-funded or school district-funded?
Well, technically, the way that the policy draft is written would primarily include the first piece that you're talking about, which would be this, having the school-based mental health program with outside people. However, we have in here also about the coordinated services, so we have school district teams that can be put together to provide mental health services for students if perhaps, I'll use an example of the school district working with the county to provide through the CCS program, a therapist for the student or mental health services. So that's included in here as well, where the school acts in that capacity also.
Well, I appreciate the intent. I have a couple of concerns. One is for Western Wisconsin, we have one mental health provider for every 30,000 person in Western Wisconsin. I don't think that opening this up is going to change that, that concerns me. The second thing is, when you were talking about funding and payment, when you went back the other page, had so, are really disadvantaged students who are on maybe medical assistance or Medicare or whatever, their services would be paid for. And then students who are well off, their insurance would pay for that, but there is a huge gap in the middle of students that wouldn't be able to afford these services. Was it looked at from this board to do anything like they used to do years ago, when there were social workers in the school that were trained in mental health, and they were more than just like credit counters? Or is that not a possibility? Because, I don't know, this concerns me that it looks like we're moving in the right direction, and I don't think it's moving at all.
Well, I think that perhaps when you're talking about the piece of the credit counter line, we have, there's school counselors, and then there are school social workers, and those are different positions in the district. I know that we talked, particularly after the recent school shootings in the last school year, we talked about asking the administration to do a thorough audit, looking at the staffing numbers and the caseloads of the school social workers and those staff to make sure that we have an adequate number. But I think that that's an ongoing thing that we're working on, is wanting to fill those, meet those needs.
So this policy isn't in place of addressing that issue?
No.
That's still something? Okay.
Right. I mean, the issue of staffing, I think, is we can obviously have people follow up with you, but that's kind of a whole separate.
Okay. Thank you.
Project, I guess you could say. But thank you. We usually don't respond, but I liked all your questions, and I thought they're important ones to raise, so. Are there any other comments from the audience, questions? Okay. Seeing none, then we'll move to the requests for future agenda items. Commissioner Hambuch Boyle.
I just have three things on here, and I, the first one was, I know someone who's part of that business committee with the chamber, and they're doing a video of promoting Eau Claire, and I'm just wondering if the Eau Claire Area School District's going to be part of that. And somebody just brought it up to me, so I thought I'd bring it up, so maybe we'll follow up on that one. And then I asked about the confluence and what will this look like over the next five to 10 years related to our strategic plan, curriculum, budget, revenue, alumni connections, I'm just kind of really interested in that, and what staff is right now connected and what you feel like that's going to look like down the road, and also if there's a way for the board to have an option to participate in what might be going on there. And then the third one here, I just thought maybe a report or something on the protocol for using donated funds for student food accounts, just to follow up on that. I'm not sure how that all turned out once we had people donating money. So those are the three things I had.
Okay. And they probably would come in the form of a report and not an agenda item at the board. Is that okay? Okay, are there any other requests for agenda items for the meeting? Okay. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, that's everyone. Meeting is adjourned.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org.